We good to go?
We know you, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Are we good up in?
Yeah, he said hello. All right. Good evening. Town of Groveland. Planning Board meeting on Tuesday, July 22nd, 7:00 in Town Hall. What is the wish of the Board?
Motion to open.
Second.
Motion made in second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right. Looking at the agenda, there was a correction to the public hearing that is not, it was a placeholder. It is actually not going to be discussed tonight. So officially, do we need to continue it because it was on and posted or no? Okay, it was just an error.
No, because it's not an actual public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. So we will not be discussing 833 Salem Street tonight. Moving on. 179 Main Street, application for an approval not required plan. In front of you, you have a plan. We have two A and Rs. This is the 179 Main Street. I believe we have applicant here? Just if you go up to the podium.
Is there a mic?
Yep, there is a mic there. Just make sure it's green. And then just state your name, who you are, and...
Jim McCarthy, owner, 179 Main Street.
Hello, welcome.
Thanks, hello.
So what are we doing?
Just dividing the lot in half. It's got twice the area that it needs, twice the frontage, so we're gonna make two lots.
Board, ever any questions?
What is the, what are the frontage requirements?
It's 100 feet.
Is this the RV with 20,000?
This is the business district?
Yeah.
Sam, have you seen this?
Beats it. No conservation, no, well, nothing.
No.
Straightforward.
Yep.
Motion to accept.
Motion made in second and to accept the A and R for 179 Main Street. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Good luck.
Thanks.
Oh, one question. Do I get the Mylar signed after the meeting?
Yeah, we can get the signatures after, yeah. All right, next up is 7 Marjory Street. Another A and R, application for approval not required. Applicant here? Absolutely.
So I wanted to show up tonight because this one's a little different than something we've had before. Under the Affordable Homes Act, Section 10, there is a new provision that overrules, or I guess adds to Section 48.6, which is the merger doctrine, which as you probably know, undersized lots held in common ownership would merge up until they meet the full conforming lot requirement. Under this new Section 10, and I think Annie put the blurb in there from the Act, yes. It allows any lot that predated zoning that was a minimum of 10,000 square feet with 75 feet of frontage to be essentially, for lack of a better word, unmerged. And then you would be allowed to put a house up to a maximum of 1,850 square feet with a minimum of three bedrooms. We do have many of these in town. The difference with this one is somewhere along the line, they rewrote the deed so that it looks like the dividing line is not there anymore. Where others have two separate deeds, get two separate tax bills, although they've merged under 48.6, they can be sold because they have those deeds. The issue with this one is they need something to register at Salem Deeds for a plan, showing that this actually complies with that. I did check with Town Council. She was in agreement as to process, which is why we're here, which is why I wanted to come in, just because it is the first of this kind since the Act went into place, so.
So basically, a pre-existing non-conformance?
That's the status that we'd end up enjoying. But unfortunately, in this case, we have to put that lot line back through this process in order for the applicant to bring it to Salem Deeds to create a new deed for the pre-existing non-conforming lot.
That's a quick one, deed too, right? They gotta redo the deed?
Yeah, that's what he was just saying. So tonight, this plan here is just a lot line adjustment, and he coming back in with another one too? Because you have to do the deed first, right?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
It's a new lot line.
Right.
Yeah.
So a new lot line that goes back on the plan, and then once it's back on the plan, it comes under the pre-existing non-conformance?
No, it will create two, it will create a new lot.
Correct, correct. So we're gonna create a new lot, but the deed has to be corrected first, correct?
No, because the A and R is what corrects the deed, because they need to record the plan.
So what do we, are we creating a new lot, then the deed gets in, and then it's going back on the plan? Or are we doing this all in one way? My question.
So is there a condition that they would have to come back, or we're just doing it one?
They would just need a plan signed that they could bring the registry of deeds.
So they bring that in, record the deed, then the plan becomes...
And they need the A and R because otherwise they would need a subdivision plan to record with the deed when they, when they, when they make the new lot.
Right, so this is just...
That's why this has to happen in this order.
Yeah, so it's, it's just an oddball in that for some reason, somewhere along the line, someone took the effort to rewrite the deed and not include that lot line.
Just the sequence, you got one, then they...
Yeah, yeah, the other ones that didn't have the lot line removed, just have an as-of-right. They can come in, get a building permit, and they're off and going. This one, because there's no official lot there, because there's no line to delineate it. They can't have two houses on one lot. So we need this plan endorsed to be recorded so that they can
Who's the applicant?
Use that section.
My father was the owner of the home that passed in September, my sister is the applicant.
Sorry to hear that.
Sorry to hear that.
And there's no question about frontage, frontage is fine also?
Yeah, the, that, there's a couple neighborhoods in town where it looks like the standard lot size was 10,000 square feet with 75 feet of frontage. Around Pond Street, there's probably three or four lots there that meet the same requirement. I don't know if there's any more in Marjory. I think they were all set up as 10,000.
But this one has 125, right?
Correct. This one, the lot we're looking at re-establishing, would be re-establishing the 75 feet of frontage that was required under the Act.
I see, okay.
Yeah, Nelson Street was all of them.
Yeah.
Motion to accept?
Yeah, motion.
I'll second.
All right. Motion made in seconded.
Do we have to like put the language in though about creating our lot line for the deed, or is that?
It should be here. I would just make a note on the parcel that it's to comply with the Affordable Homes Act, Section 10. Because there is gonna be a deed restriction on that parcel for the 1,850 square feet, three-bedroom minimum.
As amended?
As, yeah.
As amended, yep.
Okay.
Motion made in seconded, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Right, so moved.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Good seeing you.
Nice seeing you as well.
Thanks, Sam.
Okay.
Next up, Town Planner update. See the TRC for 932 Salem Street.
Yes, so we had a technical review conference for 932 Salem Street. There's a group of individuals who are looking to put a CrossFit-type gym in the back of the lot, behind the home. So they had asked a couple of questions in regards to procedure and what it was that they would need to do in order to proceed with process. So they are going back to the drawing board because they do have some concerns about septic. And once they are able to evaluate their plan, they will be coming forward with an application if things all work out. And then the other update is to introduce you all to Jonathan Sullivan. He is our new Town Planner slash Conservation Agent. This is his second day, so be kind.
Welcome. Drink him out of the fire hose yet?
We're getting there.
So I'm not sure if the Board has any specific questions for Jonathan, but he's been working on a couple of things and can, can share a little bit about what he hopes to do in the role, if that works for the Board.
Yeah, works for me.
I want to go back, where's 932 Salem Street?
That's over where Larry Kelly's lot used to be, over on Salem Street. So it's Larry Kelly's lot, and then the lot next to it, so they bought both.
The construction yard?
Correct.
Yeah. Right next to it.
So and what, how big was the facility gonna be? That's a big area.
I don't recall. It's in the existing building. They're not creating a new building.
So the garage? There's a garage in the back.
So. Sounds like a good use.
We'll see what they come up with.
Yeah.
So, welcome.
Thank you. As she said, my name's John Sullivan. I have a, coming from a consulting background. I worked with local towns across the country on things ranging from strategic plans to system selections and implementations. Before that, I was a zoning specialist with the City of Portland, Maine. And before that, I got my master's in urban planning. So a couple of the things that I want to work on in the department is making it as transparent to the public as possible with checklists, easy-to-find and fill-out applications, things like that. So that's kind of my initial priority. Yeah, do you guys have any questions for me?
Well, actually, last meeting, we had, we were having, we were going back and forth about what the criterion for evaluating a major versus a minor modification. And we, I think, thought it would be good to have some objective criterion that might be available, because it looks like our current standard is very vague. So in, you know, right, right ponying up to exactly what you're saying, to make it easier for the people who are going to be applying for these things to understand what is gonna be required of them, what's gonna be expected, and what are the, what are the pushpoints? This is exactly the kind of thing, so I would wonder, I'd seek your input about what kind of things, what factors would, would play in, and, you know, how you would recommend we weigh them.
Yeah, in the past on that one, we beat that one up pretty good, last meeting there. But the past, it's been subjective based upon the application and what's going on at the time. So there are still some things that might be a little foggy or gray with a discretion to the Board, that you probably know that from other experience.
And it doesn't happen much?
No, it doesn't. It's only happened a couple of times in my 33 years, so we haven't really seen it much. So, and some are blatantly obvious, you know, the thing's been done for 12 years. It's new application, pretty simple, on the other stuff. So you're gonna be doing these things, which sound great, and then you present those to the Board, and then we approve them or don't approve them? Is that how that works?
Yeah, that's, we can go that route, yeah.
So, and do you have a chain of command? Have you gone over this, Rebecca, what the chain of command is? I mean, he reports to us, and then, or how does this work?
So essentially, the position is under the Town Administrator.
Okay.
So just like when I retired back in 2018, I was under the supervisory authority of the Select Board.
Yeah.
But essentially, the direction of the planning Board comes from, the direction of the, of the planning side of things comes from the planning Board.
Yeah, okay, so you submit that to us, we approve it, we don't approve it, we take all the input. So same thing, just a, just the way that works.
An advisory position.
Yeah, perfect.
Great.
Yeah, that, that works out well.
Super helpful.
Okay.
So I know this is day two, so let's call this project number 25, because I'm sure Rebecca's saddled you some things, so.
Great, so that's all the updates that we have on the Town Planner side.
Sounds like it's gonna be a very quick meeting.
He may be interested in looking at that master plan.
Oh, for sure.
For us, I mean, that's a, that's a big one.
Was 2023 fall when the, when their comprehensive master plan was implemented? Or put into place at least? And we've been doing kind of, or starting to do a kind of piece-by-piece look at, you know, okay, how are, you know, what are we doing as a planning Board to sort of effectuate these things that, you know, so good citizens of Groveland have decided are priorities? And, and how are we gonna, how are we gonna implement these things and be efficacious? So it's, it's definitely good reading. It's, it's voluminous.
I'll definitely take a look at that and incorporate those goals into the department as well.
So good.
So good.
It is. Say the AD, the ADUs, familiar yourself with the things that probably stuck coming in? If the ADU stuff that just got passed with the State and without our new bylaws, we just had the MBTE Zoning Act that just got passed as well. And I don't know if you may or may not have had that conversation yet, but there's multiple towns throughout the state that are still not up to, up to code or still whether they're going back and forth with the State, I don't know, but we, we accepted it. It's, you know, been approved by our town, so that, we're just not seeing things like that maybe. We, I think we did a great job with picking the, the area that we needed the district for it, so having minimal effect, but to be determined, just to have knowledge of it.
I don't think we're gonna see ADUs in here, right?
I don't think so, because...
I think that's Sam's jurisdiction.
Because it's by right.
Yeah, by right. But the, I had a question.
It's good though.
With the, with the Merrimack Valley Plan that wanted to just put two houses on, on existing lots, and because Salem Street kicked off to full-blown construction, that'll kick us over the 10% for affordable housing. Where does that come into play?
So they have yet to pull their final building permit that would give us our 10% under the standardized subsidized housing inventory, but they're pretty close to doing so. But ADUs wouldn't impact?
No, ADUs are different, but, you know, coming in under, with other 40Bs or
Oh, yes.
etc., 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 because that's a big, that's a big project
Correct.
coming in, so that'll take care of that. That was our question with that big hearing in December, where, why we were doing that anyway? Because it, and the master plan, which they, Merrimack Valley didn't seem to know, at least that group didn't.
They couldn't, yeah, they couldn't factor that in because it hadn't, the proper permitting hasn't been. So once the building permit has been pulled, then we are
Yeah, so then we're good. So that'll be good.
And then, and then because Garrison Street is on hold, would that then potentially be subject to it? Or is it, did it get, squeak in under, before, even though it's on hold?
No, because they haven't, they never submitted.
So I think, so I think they would...
Right, we have nothing on Garrison Street.
Yeah.
They never submitted, but the, I, I ventured to guess that the State has never said no to a 40B.
I know, but I think it changes, it changes what we can and can't do, I believe.
They would have needed to have submitted an application in order to move that process forward. They have not.
Yeah.
The way, no, it doesn't look like they're gonna be...
It does not.
In the fore, in the at least foreseeable future.
Correct.
That we know of. Things could change.
For sure.
Got a little window.
They did release a statement stating that they have put it on hold pending federal funding, how that's being distributed to the state.
Oh, they did? They made a statement, yeah.
Once it gets sorted out, they'll revisit what they plan on doing. So at this time, that's what their plan is. And the 40B, even though we hit our 10%, I'm not exactly sure where we'll be after the next census in 2030, because that's what they're gonna look at. We're good as of the census 2020, but 2030, how much growth we've had and where we sit, we may not be.
That's a long ways away.
And a good point to make on achieving the status for your 10%, it really just gives us much more bargaining power to ask more from the builders when they come in with a 40B. And we can tailor-make the 40Bs to fit our town a little bit better while still providing housing.
I think
They need to be friendly.
It's something to consider, yes.
The master plan, there was a section about that as well.
Oh, for sure. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, as we've talked about, it's something that we're gonna need to continually manage to make sure that we're in, you know, at a beneficial position to manage 40B processes we can be going forward, right?
Correct.
And remember, it's special permits, so thou can ask for anything. We get it or not, so. Yeah, well, you can ask, whether you get it or not, so it's good.
I think the facade, the way it sits in, in the master plan, I think we should...
You guys have anything else for John?
Agenda times. I'll bring it up. So I guess I'm the senior member of the Board, 33 years. So a long time ago, and I promise to be brief, okay, we had a zoo for meetings. The meetings were, were going on, they were posted, there was no agenda times. And we had meetings literally into 0200 hours, that constantly. So I was delegated authority as the scribe at the time to come up with agenda times, and we did. And we did it for 25 years, pretty successful. And what we did on things like, for instance, tonight's meeting is skating right on, right on where it should be. A and Rs, etc., etc., 15-minute block times with hard times. 07, you know, 1900 hours, 1915 hours. The next one starts right there, 1915 to 1930 hours, etc., for simple little things like that. Hearings, allow a 30 to 40-minute block, continue if you need to, and put those towards the end so they don't run into the A and R stuff. So I don't know how our agendas got, those time blocks got out of there, but last week's meeting that went to 2130 hours was ridiculous. I mean, it should not have gone that long on, on the stuff it is. So just in the future, can we vote to, to actually put hard times in these things?
That's up to the Chair.
Yeah, so, so if we can get back to a regular time, so everybody knows, because it's a disadvantage for the folks that come in for a quick A and R, and they're here two and a half hours. And I saw that for so many years before. And then everybody knows to show up, get here, and it's a little bit different than the town meeting where you're not sure where your warrant article's gonna go, but...
Put the A and Rs first?
Yeah, just all the little stuff.
So when we, when, when we receive the agenda, right, all the agenda items, I talk through, which will now be with John, but with Annie, she sends it to me prior to and says, hey, this is what the, this is what we have, this is what I, how do you, how do you want to proceed? And it's always through the Chair, I'm saying, okay, so I have to be better at making sure everything's in alignment and whether we need to put public hearings towards the end before, and get the quick stuff out of the way, put some timelines. Do you have, was that ever documented for timelines for certain things?
Take a look at, at Annie, pull out the books and just take a look at every agenda. But it's very simple to do. It's, it's just like your appointment schedule. 15 minutes for A and Rs, you just go bang, bang, bang. I mean, gosh, you were here for a few of them, right? So, so you just put them in on there, hearings kick off at 2000 hours, give them a 30, 45 minutes, depends on what the hearing is. You know, 45 minutes max, though. You're going 45 minutes longer on a hearing, you're gonna lose everybody. Continue it, push it off.
But you also, you also have, you're the Chairman, so you have the power of saying, oh, we're gonna skip, we're gonna do 7 Marjory, we're gonna...
Oh, yeah, absolutely, understood.
Yeah, yeah, moving things up the agenda, clearly under your control. But there's something we did, and I don't know how we got out of that, but it's gonna make the meetings go quicker, more informative. Everyone's gonna be ready for it, so you hit it and you go. If you run into a snag, it's at the end of time. If we have a few more minutes, you can send it. Or just, just reschedule it on of coming through. A and R plans, and we did this because there was a fellow that used to try to slide A and Rs under the door, okay, like literally two days before the 21-day time clock. We changed that procedure, and it's a little bit, it can be modified, but we changed that to go get your plan timestamp the day that we put you on. Call in, we'll put you on the agenda at 1900 hours. Go get it stamped the day before or that morning, bring it in. You're already on. And what that does is that prevents that clock time from running out. Tonight, we didn't have any problems, but if, for instance, one of the plans we had, had to go back and get a line, we either have to vote to sign it out of a meeting and approve it once that change is made, or we have to deny it, or they have to withdraw it and refile it. So that's how we did that procedure, because we almost got caught a couple of times by the same character on that 21-day time clock. And that's how, then it has constructive approval, and that's how, actually, Whitestone got, got approved on Phase A. So very simple to do. We have lots of full-time staff now, so just closer to the meeting allows everybody a lot of time, and sometimes you don't need it, but that's how we used to do it to prevent that. And it's so simple, but it keeps everybody, but if you're scheduling people post 2030 hours, 8:30 at night, we're doing something wrong. Push it to the next meeting unless it's an emergency. And we have staff during the week that can handle these things. Building permit signs off, Sam's here, Rebecca's here, okay, etc., so that stuff can get done. But we got a little bit out of whack, and these meetings are going too long for no reason. Works, work sessions for the Board, if we need them to discuss some of that stuff, schedule a work session. And we can get in here and put on the boxing gloves and beat up the policy.
I haven't seen many meetings recently that have gone crazy late, right? We've, I think we've been with, and I haven't, since I've been here, I've never seen any type of timestamp on each agenda item.
Right, so we gotta pull some of the old books.
But, and I'll definitely take a look. I mean, and, and last week, we had a light agenda, and it was more of a casual conversation. We were, we weren't just talking about just Salem Street. We talked about our process going in the future, like down all over the place.
Right, so it was good conver, it was good conversation.
Yeah. But I, I mean, I, I understand what you're saying. I think that John, some part of it is, you know, creating like process flows so we know and we can kind of see what timelines are, things like that.
I think actually, we create it and he implements it. So if we, if that's what we want, 15-minute timelines, you know, each block, and, and some don't even take that long. Look what happened tonight. We're gonna be out of here five minutes. And, and if you've put in that old timetable schedule, we would have been out of here at 1945 or later, so.
And part of that is my duty to make sure that conversations are limited. When I say, all right, Wally, I'm done listening to you, and stop babbling, we're all done, right, or any, any of us, right? It's like, we can, we can get, we hit to the point, and we get moving forward, and then if we need to go on to our next and continue it, or whatever we have to do.
That's the work session stuff. So, so we always had work sessions where we needed to do policy stuff. We don't need to do it, involve everybody, and if we have a hearing, different story, okay, but let's keep it to a block time agenda, get these things moving. The legwork is done between the full-time staff here during the week of the Board. If there's a question, they can call any one of us. Emails work pretty good, and get that stuff going. How we got off track, I don't know, but we need to get back there.
I would take the position that in the past year, it has not been off track. I would say that things have moved fairly efficiently. I would say that we've had sufficient time to do the things we needed to do. I think we've been able to not push away people of Groveland that want to speak about their, their items. Sometimes, yes, it went a little...
That's not pushing away.
Hold on, some, sometimes it goes a little long, and sometimes people are redundant. And we, we, you know, we have, we exercise a little patience with that, because these are important issues to folks. And, and I certainly wouldn't be in favor of saying, okay, well, you've had your 15 minutes, I'll see you in two weeks. You know, I mean, it's, sometimes it's okay to have an hour conversation about something. We've, we've dealt with some pretty big stuff this year, including, you know, Communities Act and all that sort of stuff. And I think, I think, I think the Board's done a good job, a fine job. I don't think we need extra work sessions. I don't think we need to set hard time limits on things, unless we start to see a consistent problem. So I would not be in favor of drunking it.
A scheduled agenda time is not a hard time. And, and no one on my watch in over 30 years has been turned away from Groveland. But we do things, if we're gonna have work sessions, things that require more time, then we schedule it. If we have a discussion that brings up on something that looks like it's gonna go, that, what I'm talking about is the simple things. Applications to check them, 15 minutes is ample time unless we need it, okay? And the A and R plans. Any other discussion items, book the time. If we think it's a 45-minute discussion, let's do it. If it takes less, that's great. If it goes over, well, we'll think about it then at that time. But we need to get back to time, so the agenda time, so people know what time to show up, what time to be here, not a loose schedule that, okay, we got seven items on here, just show up for two and a half hours if they don't need to be. And put the quick things, that's all. This is not, I, we've never shut anybody off. So I, I think that may have been taken a little bit wrong. But take a look at the old agendas. We can pull them out, you can see them. For over 20 years, everybody had a block time, knew when to show up.
I appreciate it. What? Right, what? You want my pen?
Move, move to return the stolen pen?
Mr. Chair, you stole my pen?
Mr. Chee, you stole my pen? Yeah, I did, sorry. I, yeah, I appreciate it, appreciate the feedback, and I will, one, be more diligent on looking at, following through with the gender and making sure that there's, and then also just keeping times in check, so we're not here until nine o'clock. So with that, we can move on. Town Planner update is all set, anything else? John, you, you good?
I'm good.
Awesome. Again, welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and, and best of luck to you.
Thank you.
We'll go on to the next, any other items not reasonably anticipated at the time of posting?
Do you want to talk about?
Nope, I don't want to talk about anything about, go ahead.
Let's talk about your vacation.
That's certainly not reasonably anticipated.
I wanted to talk about when we do certified mailings and advertising on the paper. I think I've done a lot of development, other towns and cities and states. Usually, the process is taken over by the Town Planner.
That's, this has been a policy that the board has had since I started back in two thousand and eighteen and was created. And we have a regulation that specifically states that we stole from the Zoning Board of Appeals that says that we draft the legal notification that the applicant ensures that it's correct. The applicant is responsible for making sure that the advertisement appears in the local newspaper circulation in the area. And then we help them get the butter notifications and help them get everything together, and they are the ones responsible for actively performing the mailing. That's not a new policy.
No, I understand, but moving forward, if we have the staff, wouldn't it be easier?
We do not have the staff to do that. Some of these mailings you're talking about are three-hundred-foot radius. Most of the applicants would have to then pay us for our time and pay for the materials, because we don't have the budgets to do that. So you're asking the taxpayers to pay for the application process to go forward. So it should be the applicant, and the ownership should be on the applicant to provide that information. And so we do do that, we do have them provide us the initial envelope, the certified mailings, the stamps and whatnot, and we ask them to help us assemble the mailing, but we're the ones that physically mail it. They're the ones that just pay for it.
I'm not saying that the applicant shouldn't pay for it anyways.
Do, do you, you have a process?
The process, again, was the one that we actually did, I believe Chris Goodwin was on the board when we did with the Zoning Board of Appeals. So we do have a, a process in terms of-
Okay.
When the notices, like, how the notice is drafted, and how the process is for the mailing to proceed.
Can you send that to me?
Yes.
Thank you. The, the procedure that we put in place over thirty years ago was that form for the advertising. And it's a blank menu item or boilerplate language, and it's fill-in-the-blank, and there's your authorization to go and advertise, and that's in the files, you can pull that up. Okay, so that went out. Now, the app, to, to Brad's point, okay, if we're, if we're actually putting those things in the mail, okay, the applicant pays a fee for the application. Include that mailing or what it costs to get it out in the fee. Fifty bucks to mail out your certified, whatever it is. Okay, add that on to the fee, if we're doing it. Okay, so that goes that way. And there was a language that it in there, that if, if the property bordered another town, we had to let the other town know. But if it doesn't, then it's just for the town of Groveland. So-
That's not correct, you have to notify the surrounding towns, no matter what.
They're bored. Not by certified letter. What I'd like to see is, let's just see what our process is, what, what we have first, and then we can review it, and then if we want to have a discussion, and we'll put it on the agenda, and we can have an open discussion on it, and kind of go from there. I mean, you brought it up, so it's a point, and we can just take a look and review, and kind of go from there. If you pull that form, that actually has towns on it. Yes, correct.
I agree with that.
So it's very simple.
Right.
And we, we've done it for over three decades, I don't think we've ever had an issue with it. But if we're doing the mailings now, and we do have the staff, I mean, the taxpayers are paying full-time people to get this thing going, so charge a fee to the applicant that covers that cost. Let's just, let's see the current process, and we'll kind of go from there.
But then I guess that another item not reasonably anticipated